Hey, 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 everybody. So I don't think that this live is going to be as long as they usually are or how they have been recently. I do want to recap some important information, some things that you know, if you are just now getting on the Danny train for this ride, I'm going to go back. I want to share with you some things that I've shared previously, things that maybe some of you don't know, cover some of the basics, share with you the things that happened today, and then kind of go from there. So I'm going to give it a second for folks to pop on in here, and then we'll get this, we'll get this party started. So how does that sound to everybody? What's up, Chris? Hopefully you got some rest. I hope that you got some rest. Hey, Herb, how are you? What's up, Doug? Hey, bro. Y'all doing all right? It's cold here. It is cold. Like, hey, Patricia, like I had forgotten, like, you know, Atlanta, it's called Hot Atlanta for a reason. You know what I mean? But it's definitely cold here. It's going to be like, I don't know, like not even 30 degrees. So, hey, Michelle, what's up, Roland? Hey, Missy, you guys are very, very welcome. I know, Donna, I know. So I'll give it just a few more seconds for folks to get up in here. Hi, Scotty, how are you? Oh, thank you, Jamie. This is literally like leftover from today. And me just like, oh, I'd better do a live. Let's, let's get on here and do it. Well, you know what? So here's the thing, I don't even, what's up, Ramon? Heather, I don't even really like technically own a coat, I guess. Hey, Jenna, hey, Jeff, hey, Heather. What's up, Shannon? How are you? How is everybody? You guys doing okay? I love you guys back. All right, it was a very nice article, Alicia, in the Bristol Herald. I'm super excited about them and that article. They, they got it right. One of the few pieces that I've seen that have like legitimately got it right. You know what I mean? And so here's the thing, I appreciate everybody talking. Let me tell you about today, though. So when we talk about Scott County, it was an amazing day, not just like, not just me. Let me tell you, you guys, the community showed up. There was not a seat in the house. It was packed. It was literally packed, and that was a great demonstration of this community and what can happen when you come together. Dr. Spahiu was there, and he spoke. Tim Bradshaw spoke. We had other community members that spoke as well. I mean, it was packed, and so I was super excited to see the number of people that did come out. So Ramon, we've been talking about, thank you, Danny. So we've been talking about Ballad Health. Ramon, I'm not going to be able to catch you up on everything tonight, so just stick with me, and then I'll try to kind of give you guys, bring you up to date. Thank you, Heather. Okay, so check this out, folks. So if you are just coming on board the Ballad Danny train that we've been riding for about 11 days now, I want to bring you up to speed. So for those of you all who know, you know, Ballad Health was the, was the baby that was birthed from the merger between Mountain States and Wellmont, right? And here's where we are. I want to, I heard some people talking today. My mom heard some folks talking too, because my mom came with me today to, to the Board of Supervisors meeting in Gate City. So she was with me today. And so we heard people talking a little bit, thinking that there's nothing that we can do, okay? And so I want to say this, okay, about, about this process. There is a COPA that is in place. That COPA, which is the Cooperative Agreement of Public Advantage, that's what it stands for. Hey, Stephen, how are you? So check this out. I want you all to understand, the COPA is for 10 years, but that COPA can be suspended. It can be modified. It can be terminated at any time. So before you all think that you're just at the mercy of Ballad Health, let me tell you that you are not. Now, I will also tell you this and give you a realistic picture. Whatever happens from this point forward is going to be a rough ride. Like, there's no, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, because the merger was approved. So you need to understand, if you do nothing, if you sit back and you let Ballad make every change they want to make, you're stuck, and it's going to suck, and your health care is going to be at a disadvantage. You're going to have to travel more, get less quality care, pay more out of your pocket for it. We've already seen that, right? So that's the first, that's the first thing. The second thing is, you can fight this damn COPA. And I'm going to tell you, when you fight it, it's going to be some tough work, because here's what happens. Now that the COPA has happened, it will take the FTC stepping in, removing state action immunity from Ballad Health. Okay? And that means, hey, you guys aren't immune from the state taking action. You can't just do whatever you want, right? So you remove that, and then what happens is you ask the FTC to come in, and they can actually, and they have before in other cases. The FTC has actually made, the FTC has actually made certain hospitals that have merged sell parts of the hospitals. So prior to this, prior to this merger, Wellmont had eight other offers, right? And so we know that there were other people interested in buying hospitals and buying, buying part of this system. So the FTC can come in and do that. So I just want you all to know that. Good, good girl, Susan. This is critical. You have to email the FTC every stinking day. You have to email them every day. There are a million of you all in this region. If just half of you all email the FTC every stinking day, I'm here to tell you that change will come. Change will come, sooner than later, change will come. Today's meeting was extremely good. I have to give super amazing, incredible props to the Scott, to Scott County Board of Supervisors today, because they asked the tough questions. They really did. Even though that they were, even though they were polite and they were respectful to Ballad, they held them to the fire, you know? One of my favorite questions Danny asked today, the other Danny, not this Danny, he said, what are the negatives? You guys have put on this big presentation and told us about all the positives. We know that you've had to look at the negatives. What are they? And they could not and did not give a clear explanation. Whenever you got to the tough questions, there weren't any answers. So let me just tell you something. When they say, when Ballad Health says, we have not had time to talk to our EMS people. Hey, Francis, that's not true, okay? And I'm going to tell you why. The downgrading, the combining of the trauma centers was part of the COPA agreement, right? So that means for over a year now, Ballad Health has known that they were going to merge the Level 1 Trauma Centers. Now, I can tell you that Jeff Ackerman from the State Department of Health told me on the phone to my ears that they did know that, and they agreed not to do, they agreed not to get involved, but it was because they were under the impression, for whatever reason, that Ballad was going to leave the Level 1 Trauma Center in, at Holston Valley, probably because it's, it's right there, centralized in the location, right? And I love that part too, Heather. So, so here's the deal. The NICU was never in a COPA agreement. It was never part of it, and neither was, neither was the downgrading of Bristol from a Level 2 to a Level 3. That was never in the COPA agreement. So when Ballad Health says, hey, this has already been approved by the state, once again, I have to say liar, liar, pants on fire, because that's not true. The only thing that the state agreed upon was the combining of a Level 1 Trauma Center. That's it. Now, whether or not it's in Johnson City or whether or not it's in Holston Valley, that is still yet to be determined, right? I do, I do have to say that Scott County today, you guys saying, hey, pull up that map again. Help me understand something. If you want this to be in the best interest of the entire community, tell me why you're picking Johnson City when clearly Holston Valley is more centralized to the entire service area. I love it, because those are true statements. Those are true reasons. All of those things are factual. And the fact that Ballad was kind of sitting back on their heels today tells you, they were not expecting this level of public scrutiny. They were not expecting this level of pushback. They were not expecting for people to fight for their rights to healthcare and access. They were not expecting country bumpkins like they think we are to have the brains to say, listen, if you're going to make us travel double the time, that means our transports are going to be out an hour or two longer than they usually are, and it's our people, and it's our, it's our family's lives that are, that are at stake. You know what I'm saying? This is, this is, this is the real deal. So kudos to them. Kudos for Danny for asking for me to get some extra time, because I came all the way from Atlanta. I seriously do appreciate that, because these things are real, and this is important, and people's lives are at stake. I can tell you that I was so glad somebody else besides me had the NICU numbers today, because the NICU numbers, there's no 9% decline in NICU numbers. The only decline there is, is because you've been diverting babies, Ballad. You've been sending babies down to Johnson City and keeping them out of Holston Valley, and that's a freaking fact. You've got nurses, you've got NICU nurses who, who travel 30 and 45 minutes to work, who are, who are already happen to use vacation time and sick time to pay their bills, because you are messing with their livelihood. This is not about public advantage. This is a definitive public disadvantage, and that is why we have asked that Terry Gilgore tell the State Department, the State Health Department in Virginia that they are in violation of the COPA. Let me, let me, let me make you guys understand what this COPA says, okay? Because this is important. Yeah, I know, Jamie. It's not the FTC, it's just their staff. Okay, really? So, okay, whatever, Danny. I can't with him. Like, that's just the honest truth. I cannot. Hold on, I want to give you guys exactly what the COPA says, so that you do understand. Who do you reach out to locally? Okay, so Ashley, in Solomon County, I will tell you that the Solomon County Commissioners, they passed a resolution opposing all of these changes by Ballad as well, right? So you do want, you absolutely do want to keep talking to your local government, right? But what you really want to do is, we need the FTC's attention, right? That's absolutely critical. And you need to be talking to your State Health Department, and you need to be talking to your Attorney Generals. All of those folks need to be, need to be part of this. So you know what, Heather? I'm waiting to see what Terry Gilgore does. I'm not interested in what he says. What I know is that Terry Gilgore has received $3,000 in campaign contributions in 2014 and 2015. That's total. One was 2,000, one was 1,000. And, and he, and I know that he got that directly from Allen Levine, not from Ballad, but from, from Allen Levine in 2014 and in 2015, which is kind of ironic, because here's the deal. Allen Levine lives in Tennessee. Terry Gilgore is in Virginia. So why are you giving him donations? He can't help you personally. Maybe he could help you professionally, just throwing that out there. Or am I supposed to be too stupid or country to know that and connect those dots? If you follow the money, there's always answers. That's like, that's just period. So I want to tell you what the COPA says, so that you know what, what the outcome can be. And I keep saying that, and then I keep picking up the wrong documents, right? So, okay, that's because I got a lot of stuff here, folks. Done a lot of research. So here's what the COPA says, right here. Which, by the way, they're coming up for an annual review in January as well. But check this out. It says, "This COPA is subject to modification if at any time the State Health Department determines that the likely benefits resulting from the cooperative agreement no longer outweigh any disadvantages attributable to any potential reduction in competition that may result from the cooperative agreement. The COPA is subject to termination for the same thing." So this is what we need to understand. When Ballad tells you, you have, yeah, so Michaela, the Department of Justice is going to say that. I'm going to tell you why. The reason why I'm saying still, the Department of Justice had, they, they, they had some dealings with HMA, which is the company that Allen Levine worked for prior to this. The reason why they're telling you that is because right now, there's no definitive proof of criminal action or false medical claims, things of those natures. That's why they're saying that, right? But I can, I can promise you that that information is still being passed along to the FTC. Right now, the FTC is your best bet, period. So here's the deal. So what I, what I really want to focus this conversation on are the facts. I don't really care what Allen Levine has to say right now. I don't, I don't care what he's putting on social media. I don't care, because real numbers are coming out. Facts are coming out. The very fact that they just met with local EMS in Duffield County was today, from the Duffield area, was today, speaks volumes. You knew that you planned to merge these trauma centers a year ago, sir. So don't tell me you didn't have time to talk to EMS before now. Don't tell me you didn't have time to talk to the community before now. You did. You all kept these things private, and you all kept these things away from the public for this very reason. You were hoping you could just sneak it all by, like you have done everything else. And when you pretty much buy local media, right? When you have so many advertising dollars, or when you have the publisher of the Kingsport Times, or the former publisher of the Kingsport Times on your board, you know, you have, you have the ins and outs. If you look at everybody who's on his board, he's got SVP from, from Eastman on there. You got folks from ETSU on the board. You've got folks from, you know, from media on the board, accounting people. He's, he's pretty much, he thought he had all the bases covered. You know what I'm saying? Catch on. Just, all you got to do is hit me up, email me, or message me. So I will tell you this. Doors are opening. People are starting to see, and there is pushback. You guys have got some choices, because here's what they're going to do. They're going to say, oh, we'll compromise with you guys. We'll leave this here, or we'll only downgrade this to a 2, or we'll do this, or we'll do this, right? But here's the deal. Is that going to solve the long-term issue? My question to you guys now, and this is what you really ought to be considering, every single one of these government officials that are watching this live right now, ask yourself this question. Because let me tell you what, what you're dealing with right now is the beginning. This is the first real major change that they're, that they're trying to make. Now, granted, they've closed hospitals that they said they weren't going to. That's already happened, right? They've already sold out CNR, CRNA groups to anesthesiologists down the street. They've got ICU nurses leaving just like that, right? They can't keep what they have staffed currently. You have to ask yourself right now, you have to ask yourself right now, do you want a Band-Aid? Or are you ready to do surgery and get a long-term fix? That's the, that's the key. The FTC email, you guys can type this for me. It is antitrust@ftc.gov. Simple as that. Yes, Michaela, absolutely. I talked about that today in front of the board. I will absolutely give you the information from Mr. Fitzgerald. I actually have his direct line as well. So, okay, so here's the deal. Let me explain the way the COPA is being overseen, okay? The COPA is being overseen by Gary Miller. He is the local COPA oversight and has, has approximately seven or eight people that are working. Thank you, Shannon, for throwing that up there. And now here's what's, here's what's funny about Gary Miller. Gary Miller used to work for Wellmont, and his paycheck comes from Ballad Health. So the problem for me is, right? If I'm asking you to oversee me and make sure I'm keeping my commitments, but I'm also the one paying your bills, I'm probably going to get a like favorable review, am I not? That just seems asinine to me and makes no sense whatsoever. And then you have Larry Fitzgerald, who is the state hired COPA representative. But here's the thing, he only works part-time. So here's, so tell me this. If the COPA agreement for the state of Tennessee is in 119 pages, that's how many commitments there are. 119 pages. How can you oversee that part-time? When I talked to Larry Fitzgerald, he did not know that babies had already been diverted from NICU. He did not know that LND had already been diverted. He did not know that the Cancer Treatment Center at Allendale was already moving to Indian Path, and that people were being made to pay not just a physician's normal copay of 20, but also the facility fee of $130. He did not know. And let me tell you what they told me about this PET scan radiology thing. When you have to go and get a PET scan, your CAT scan, or any of that stuff, and you have to pay your portion of that copay, here's what they're going to tell you. I really don't care what Gary Hicks says. What I can tell you is that he sponsored the House bill that was the same version of Rusty Crow's bill. Russ, Gary Miller reports directly to Ballad's Audit Board, and then he turns that information also over to, and the Audit Board, they return all that, they turn all that information over to Larry Fitzgerald and the State Health Department. Let me back up, though, because I want to stay on track, and I just got off track. What was I saying before that? I got to stop reading y'all's stuff while I'm trying to tell you stuff. What was I telling you all? Somebody help me. I need to back up. What was I saying? What was I saying? Antitrust, COPA, how it works, paychecks. Gary Miller, his paycheck comes directly from Ballad Health. So does his team. Larry Fitzgerald only does it part-time, right? So here's my point when it comes to this. Radiology, thank you, Sarah, Mom Power, Stacy. Amen for you. Cancer, thank you, Shannon. We're back. Cancer. So here's the deal. When you have to go, so check this out. Here's what I need you to understand. When you go to get a PET scan, or you go to get a CAT scan, and they need to be able to determine if you're chemo, if your treatment is actually working, if you don't have your portion of that bill right then that you can pay, you are being turned away. Thank you, guys. So here's what that means. The average, your portion, the average your portion is around $400. So I want you all to do the math with me, okay? I want you all to do the math. If I'm going, if I'm undergoing chemo or radiation treatment, right? And let's just say I have to do 10 weeks of treatment or 12 weeks. Let's just do, let's do 12 weeks, just to make the math easy. And now, instead of paying a, and I have to go once a week for treatment. So instead of me paying $20 once a week, $80 a month, I now have to pay that 20 plus 130. That 130 is the facility fee, because I'm now at the hospital and not in Allendale at the Physicians Base Center, right? So that 150 times four is $600 a month, instead of $80 a month for the same cancer treatment. Now, how many of you guys can afford $600 a month for cancer treatment? How many of you guys can afford that, just straight out of your pocket? And then at the end of that 12 weeks, right? After you've forked out, what, $1,800? And you've forked out $1,800, do you have the $400 that you're going to need for your PET scan to even see if it's working, or if they need to adjust your stuff, right? Probably not many of you, because we don't have $800,000 a year salaries like Allen Levine. Just throwing that out there. And that was his salary back in 2015. It's probably way more than that. But with bonuses, he cleared about 1.3 million, just so y'all know. So check this out. This is what it would be, right? Instead of the doctor copay, you pay doctor copay plus facility pay. Now, here's what they're going to tell you, because this is the bullshit they fed me. Here's what they told me. They said, yeah, but there's a system in place that's actually more liberal than other places, and as long as you, you can make up to 225% of the poverty level, and as long as you don't make more than that, then those fees are waived. Well, let me tell you what the poverty level is for a family of four. A family of four, the poverty level is $25,100. So if you make more than $56,000 a year, and there's a, and there's a family of four, so if you and your husband both make 25 grand, 26 grand, 27 grand a year, if you make more than $55,000, $56,000 a year, 100% of those costs are passed on to you. And do you want to know why they're doing it? Would you like to know why they're moving LND to Indian Path? Do you want to know why they're moving cancer treatment to Indian Path? It's because they want to get a special designation that's called a 340B. A 340B designation allows Ballad Health to save 35% on their prescriptions. Every prescription that's written in that hospital gets 35% discount. Well, guess where those prescriptions are written to? Their pharmacy within the hospital, yeah? So how much? We're talking about millions upon millions upon millions of dollars to have this distinction. Indian Path used to have it, and then they lost it. And now they want to get it back. Y'all following me on this? So this is what I'm talking about. This is not something that this community can afford. You've got a million people, and 20% of this community is, is living at the poverty line. Well, Heather, it's either that or what will they do? They'll turn to the drugs in the community that is already an issue. Yeah. So, so this is what we're talking about. Lives ultimately lost. And I'm going to tell you something. And Danny Mann brought this up today. He's, he's one of the members of the Board of Supervisors. And when he brought it up, Lisa Clark's response. Now, Lisa Clark is the CEO of JCMC, the Children's Hospital down in Johnson City for Ballad Health. And he was talking to them about the travel time for babies who are in distress and could, could normally go to, to Holston Valley. And the fact that those babies are being diverted, we know they're being diverted right now. They have these babies being sent to Johnson City. And what he said today was, he said, and I don't know if this is true. He said, but what I've been told is that since you all started diverting these babies away from Holston Valley, did I say Lisa Carter? I don't know what I said. Y'all know, did I, did I say her name right? I don't know what I said. Lisa Carter, that's her name. I was seeing her face in my head. But here's the deal. What he said is, he said, I don't know if this is true or not, but what I've been told is that since you all started diverting babies away from Holston Valley Medical Center and to Johnson City, two babies have died. Now, I don't know if that's true. He doesn't know if that's fact. Her response was, saying things like that only serves to inflame the community. And he said, well, you know what? You guys should be inflamed, because baby's lives matters. And I said, kudos. I said, Clark, thank you, Lori. Thank you. Carter, sorry, Lisa Carter. Thank you. I appreciate that. So this is the kind of stuff that you, that we're dealing with. Babies are being diverted. Traumas are already being diverted. They've done that to, in order to lower, you hear Allen Levine talking about the daily census, right? Here's the part that I loved. She talked about the daily census and the numbers and the 9% decline in NICU numbers at Holston Valley. And Danny had the same numbers that I had. And here's what I will tell you, is that the numbers, he said, well, just tell me if these numbers are correct. And he started, he started just rattling off the numbers, like I did on one of my lives last week. It was like 294, 268, 268. And, and they went all the way back to 2009. From 2009 to 2018, the numbers for the Holston Valley NICU have, have continuously risen. And he was like, that's not a decline. And he asked her if they were correct. And you know what she said? She said, I don't have those numbers. We're, we've been going by the daily census. Oh, so you don't know the NICU admissions from the Level 3 NICU that you're trying to close? You don't know how many babies? Well, I can tell you, from July 2017 to June of 2018, you had 268 babies admitted to Holston Valley's NICU. You had 84 of those babies that were born premature. 66 of them were NAS babies, because they'd been drug exposed and needed to stay in the NICU an average of 21 days. You had another 66 that were in respiratory distress. And guess what? Out of 268 babies, only 14 were transferred out of the region. So when Allen Levine tells you that babies are being unnecessarily transferred out, I call bullshit one more time, because only 14 babies, that's like, what? A little bit more than one a month? Out of 268? These are facts. And here's the funny thing. They keep saying the numbers are skewed, but they won't tell you what's skewed. They won't tell you what's incorrect. You want to know why? Because when we give you the information in its totality, you can't say it's incorrect. You're taking out bits and pieces. So follow me. 84 divided by 12 is that seven daily census he's talking about, right? But he is not including the NAS babies. He's not including the respiratory distress babies. He's not including all the other babies. You're taking one piece that has a four-piece that apart to it, and you're using that to try to make the public think that you have the right to close this NICU, when you don't. See, Michelle, that's the stuff that we're talking about. So here's what I'm going to tell you, guys. There's a couple of pieces of information that I really want to give you before I get off of here. One, this COPA can be terminated, modified at any point in time. You just have to scream loud enough. And that means you need to blow up the FTC every day. It means you need to blow up your State Health Department every day. It means you, it means you need to blow up your Attorney General every day. Because every day that this continues to go on, people's lives are at stake, and every life matters. Allen Levine might say, oh, we're only talking a hun, less than 100 babies. Well, guess what? 100 babies means a hell of a lot to me, and it means a hell of a lot to the people of this community. So every day, that's what you need to do. Telephone calls, emails, every single day. If there's a million of us and half of us every single day, count this out, it's going to work. Stephen, my abs alone. But this is what needs to happen, okay? And then you guys have got to be in for the long haul. You've got to understand that if, if the FTC does step in and they start to unwind this merger, it is not going to be pretty. It is not going to be pretty. We have to be ready for different outcomes. We have to, we have to demand transparency to see the other offers that are on the table. We have to be able to see what's happening, what's being offered, what's being affected, what's going to change, all of those things. In a Danny world, this is just me, and this is what I said today. The pediatricians in this area, when, when they talk about, so you know they keep giving you, yes, I will, I will post all of the emails and numbers again. I put it at the top of my live every time, Holly. I'll go back when I'm done, and I'll put it up there as well. But here's the thing. The people in this community need to understand that it is not over, and you do have, you do have, absolutely have a say-so. I want to take a look and see what you guys are saying, if there's anything else that you need to know. Okay. But when they start to unwind this, demanding public transparency is going to be huge. You have a voice in this, you have a say in this, and you have to demand your care. Um, this is, this, I mean, these are just the absolute facts on what has to happen. Um, uh, so FTC, state health department, attorney generals, that's an everyday thing. What is the alternate, uh, alternate option for healthcare in the area? Well, that's the thing Kevin, there's really not one. With this merger, with this merger, um, they control an average of 77% of all inpatient care and greater than 50% of outpatient care in this area. That's why it's a medical monopoly, both in terms of care and in terms of employment. You have to go like, all, like Holston Medical Group, um, they are not part of Ballot. So listen to me guys, Holston Medical Group is an option for you. If you're looking for a different primary care provider, if you're looking for a different network, that's a network that is not part of Ballot. Um, so maybe we could start to research those for you. Maybe that's a note that I need to make. Mama, will you make a note for me? I need to research all of the doctors and options that are not valid. I will do that for you. I will put together a list of local options that are not valid. Who's, okay, so let me tell you, the state health department is who has to approve or disapprove closing the, the NICU. Now, they have up to 90 days to approve that, which means they could approve it or disapprove it at any time, but they have up to 90 days to make that decision. And Ballot filed the request November 12th. So it's been 14 days. So Scott County Board, what they did was they voted and approved a resolution. That resolution today is to oppose both the cha, the, the taking away of the NICU and opposing the, um, the downgrade of the Level 1 Trauma Center at Holston Valley. So that was their proposal. Uh, it was passed opposing both of those two things, just so you know. Um, let me see, I'm looking to see. You're welcome Tanya. Um, let me see. Yeah, so here's the deal folks, these, these are the things that you have to do and that you have to be on top of. I'm gonna continue digging. Um, I'm not gonna go into Alan Levine, his past, his past employment or the 60 Minutes interview. I did post it yesterday, so feel free to take a peep at that. We can cover that again later. Um, and let you guys know what's happening after, um, you know, after with all of that. I don't know what's gonna happen with that concerned. I will tell you that I did share that information with the border supervisors today, um, later on in the process, because it's important for people to know who's running your healthcare system. Uh, and that the last healthcare system that he was, uh, president of their entire state in Florida was, uh, was a fraud. Um, yes ma'am, you should get in touch with your boards, period. Wherever you live, you need to be in touch with your board. You need to be in touch. Now, if I were some of you guys in southwest Virginia, I'd be ringing the shit out of Terry Kilgore. He was there today. Um, he was there today. And, um, and his response was, he made a statement that said, um, that he had, if he did not, if he did not go along with this merger, he would have lost hospitals in southwest Virginia. And my thing is, well, you've already lost one anyway. They're already repurposing another one. Um, so I don't really know that you gained a whole lot. You still don't have a trauma center. You still don't have like a Level 2 or a Level, Level 3 NICU. Yeah, he said nothing in front of everybody. He met with EMS along with Ballot prior to that. So if I were you, I would be ringing Terry Kilgore and saying, hey, you know, because here's what, here's what was requested of him. When Tim Bradshaw spoke today to the board, he requested that the, that Terry Kilgore contact the Virginia State Health Department and, uh, and say that Ballot is in violation of the cooperative agreement, which they are, period, right? The regional and lonesome. Yeah. So, um, these are the things that we need to, these are the things that need to be addressed. Thank you Herb. Um, so I just wanted to, to throw all of that out there for you guys. So, so Alicia, you have up to 76 days to bombard the state department of health. You have up to 76 days. They can disapprove or approve at any point in time that they choose. They did actually, so Steven, well, I don't know if they like quote-unquote told the public, but here's what I will tell you. Scott County voted and they opposed the, the, the downgrade of the trauma centers back in September. And they sent that information to all of the county boards. They sent it to all of the, the city boards. They sent it to the representatives. They sent it to Terry Kilgore. They said it today during the, the, uh, the meeting. So they did try to get out in front of it. Scott County did try to get out in front of this and send the information out. Now, you gotta ask, why did our local government not let everyone know? You gotta ask, why did these folks kinda keep their mouths closed? And here's the thing, Ballot keeps talking about what they're going to do. Here's who we are hiring. Well, you haven't hired those people. And, and it's extremely hard to hire those types of people. When they talk about like hiring a pediatric trauma center, tra, trauma surgeon, those are like so hard to come by. The pediatric surgeon that we have in Johnson City right now, she's good. She's just not a certified trauma. She's not a pediatric trauma surgeon. Getting one will cost a hell of a lot of money. And we don't have the resources. We've got nurses quitting right now because Ballot Health is only offering 18 bucks an hour for nurses. Where the hell do they do that at? You know? So these are the things. Um, so Beckham, my understanding is that it was not on the news. Um, I know that there's news clips of it. Um, but I don't know if anybody recorded the entire thing, so just letting you guys know. Um, so this is the deal. Now, I have had several of you guys. There's not, there's not a lot. Well, let me give you, okay, so let me just go ahead and address. Can I address the pediatric thing before we go? Listen, so here's the deal. When Ballot Health met with all of their pediatricians, they, and they were proposing these two pediatric ERs. Here's what, here's what their own pediatricians told them, it's not necessary. The 20,000 ER visits that happened for pediatrics between Bristol and Kingsport were more urgent care. They weren't trauma, they weren't emergencies, they were more pediatric urgent cares. So it would make more sense, both in terms of need and cost and staffing, to build two pediatric urgent care facilities that we could actually staff with the right personnel, right? Than to build two pediatric ERs that we don't need and will have problem staffing, period. That's what they told them and they're not listening. There's no need for a pediatric trauma center or two pediatric ERs. It's just shit that sounds good to get more money poured into the, into, into Johnson City and the other areas. It's not necessary. You could take the money that you wanna do with those two things. And here would be my suggestion, now granted, I don't run hospitals, but I'm just using common sense. I would leave Holston Valley exactly like it is. I would leave Bristol at a Level 2 trauma center, right? I would take Abingdon and make it, Abingdon or one of the other southwest hospitals. I would wanna talk to EMS and see which ones make the most sense in terms of travel time. But I would wanna make one of the hospitals, Abingdon's hospital was just built in 2011 for $132 million. So one of the hospitals up there needs to be a Level 2 trauma center and you need to have at least a Level NICU up there so that the babies up there have more of a fighting chance than having to come all the way down to Holston Valley. That's just my two cents. The same funds that you wanna use for all these pediatric specialties and subspecialties and all these trauma centers and ERs that we do not need, reallocate that money so that you provide sufficient care. It doesn't have to be like the top, top, top of the line, but give people a fighting chance more than they have now so that everyone in the, in the region, even the outer lying areas, can get to a decent trauma center and a decent Level NICU within 30 to 45 minutes. That's just what makes sense to me. That's what saves more lives to me. That's just what I would like to see entertained. I wanna see those two proposals side by side. Show me the money, show me the numbers and let's see what's in the best interest of this community. Do that and maybe we'll think that you actually give a shit, Ballot. That would be my thing, because I know y'all watch too. Um, but anyway, um, they do not know. Christina, listen, they don't know anything about those pediatric ERs. They don't know where they're gonna be. They don't know what they're gonna do with them. They don't know, like literally, there's no, they literally said today that they would be trying to get these staff, like a pediatric trauma surgeon in the next one to two years. Well, in the meantime, what's happening at the other locations where you're downgrading? Ballot is not insurance Penny. Ballot is the healthcare system. Ballot is the healthcare system, has nothing to do with insurance. It's the healthcare system. They own the hospitals in this region and the majority of the care. The majority of your inpatient care is run and owned, or at least it's a medical monopoly by Ballot Health. I showed you guys this map a while back and I'll show it to you one more time in case you haven't seen it. Look, this is your map guys for care before I go, okay? You see this map? You see those numbers? That's the percentage of care that they monopolize in these regions. So you can see more than two-thirds of the region, they are, they have a monopoly on anywhere from 75 to greater than 90% of the care. Just so you know. It's a medical monopoly. And I just wanna dispel this myth so that I can crush it once and for all. When Alan Levine tells you, when Lisa Carter tells you that volume is the best indication for babies, it's not the best, it is one indication. And yes, it's a good indication. We don't wanna send, we don't wanna send high-risk babies to facilities that have less than 35 babies, right? But if these facilities have more than 100 babies a year, which Holston Valley has 268, that's considered high volume. But volume alone, and you know they're always quoting the American Academy of Pediatrics. So I want you to see right here at the top. You see that says, American Academy of Pediatrics right here? Y'all see that? So let me tell you what they say, okay? Um, "Other studies assessing NICU volume suggest caution in using this measure, volume, um, as an effective indicator of quality care." There was another study that was done of over 94,000 very low birth weight babies. Those are babies that weigh less than 3.3 pounds. And those, they were entered into the Vermont Oxford Network database between 95 and 2000 and it compared NICU volume with other indicators based on the hospital's characteristics and patient outcomes. And they found that although annual volume explained 9% of the variation in the hospital mortality rates, other hospital characteristics explained another 7%. 9% volume, other hospital characteristics, 7%. Volume is not the bible when it comes to NICU outcomes. There's a lot of other factors that go into it. Proximity, the ability for, for parents to be there, for mothers to be there, to be able to do kangaroo care, to be able to do skin-to-skin contact. For the, I mean, most moms who have NICU babies experience some form of postpartum depression. It is essential, it is crucial for, for these mothers to have access to their babies. And they cannot do that in this region if they have to travel an hour to get to them. Those are just the facts, that's the reality. So, uh, let me see, my meeting with Ballot. Okay, so I personally have a meeting with Ballot Health. I'm gonna take some folks with, with me hopefully, December the 13th. Um, it's in Johnson City. I verified that today with Lisa Carter before she left and I shook her hand and said, see ya December 13th. Um, let me see if there's anything else. All right, um. Randy, somebody tell me when the town hall meeting is, um, and, and as long as I can be there, I will make it happen. Anything else guys? Okay, I got it, I got it. You were talking about ballot insurance for employees, got it. Okay, I think that's it guys. Okay, perfect. Um, so I'm gonna get off of here now. I hope this information was useful. Here's the biggest PayPal info. I did better, so let me tell you what I did. I got you, thank you Steven for reminding me. So I actually put together a little page because I know that some of you guys are new to me. You don't know what all I'm doing, you don't know what all's happening. So here is a link to a page that I put on my website that will tell you, um, a little bit about what I'm doing and how you can help me help you guys and other people. So it is, I just put it in the comments, so you guys can check that out. And, uh, and I appreciate you all very much, I really do. Um, the next commission meeting in December at the courthouse. Somebody give me a date, email me a date, email me a date. Anything that's open to the public, give me a date folks, okay? Um, hopefully this is, uh, hopefully this has been beneficial to you guys. And, uh, and I will keep you updated. Pin the link, I will do that Michaela, I, I will. Hey Suzanne. You're very welcome Danny Mann, you really are. Thank you very much sir for today, I appreciate that. Um, so that is it, that's all I got. Um, so for those of you guys who've been, um, I did not see Alison Sullivan's post. Can somebody give it to me? I didn't see it. Or she can post it again, Alison Sullivan. I don't want you to think that I'm skipping over it. Sometimes a bunch of comments come in at once and I don't get to see them. Um, "I'm a ballot-employed physician, but I'm 100% against removal." Kudos. And this is the thing, so Alan, this is one of the things that I, I love. And I said this, I said this and I will continue to say this. Not every, every ballot employee is like horrible. Most of the employees are great. It's the top, it's the top tier. Um, and so I, I have to give the ballot employees who, um, who are speaking out and who are risking their employment and risking their livelihood, um, kudos. It's gonna take a village. And, um, and you know, this is what I told my mama, so I'm, I'm showing my age now, but I told my mama this today. I said, all that I keep thinking of about this whole situation, do y'all remember the movie, um, Next of Kin with Patrick Swayze? Do y'all remember that movie? Where the, uh, where the city slickers are gonna come against the old country boys? Do y'all, y'all know the, y'all know the movie I'm talking about? And all I keep thinking is, boy, did they underestimate these country bumpkins. So you guys are very, very welcome, very welcome. Um, I do have a secure encrypted email. So if you have information that you want to send to me, um, you just inbox me on here. I will give you that email address and you can send it. Here's, you know, anything that is documented that has to do with, you know, uh, employment being threatened, anything that's documented that has to do with, um, you know, with admissions or, uh, things that you find questionable, that you know goes against the grain of what you're supposed to be doing. Um, feel free to let me know and send that on.